Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the Joint Hybrid Planning Board Meeting of October 30th. Any other call to order? Ms. Creighton?
Here.
Ms. Lucio?
Here.
Ms. Foley?
Here.
Ms. Strawnley?
Here.
Ms. Philbrick?
Here.
Ms. Tenny's not joining us. Thanks. Looks like we have a quorum. I'd like to remind all board members, guests, as to be recognized by the chair if they wish to speak. And this meeting is being recorded. Tonight's meeting is basically to get the planning board's opinion on various citizen petitions to a special town meeting, to vote in support or not to support or just to abstain from a position on various articles. With us tonight is our town administrator, Greg Fetterspiel, who I asked to speak on Articles 8 and 11, which is firstly either the lease of the community center or the purchase of the community center. We'll take them up separately, but I've asked Greg to just give an overview of both articles. So with that in mind, Greg, if you could just give the board an overview?
Sure. Thank you. So as folks, I probably know, the lease that the Community Center Inc. had with Harbor Point is being terminated. And therefore, there is a need for an alternative arrangement. And the town has been in negotiations with Harbor Point, seeking to secure a multi-year lease, a 10-year lease that would be renewable. And then we would turn around and sublease it to the Community Center Inc. to continue their operations. So that is what is being requested in Article 8, voted permission to enter into a multi-year lease. It's anticipated that lease would be a novel policy similar to what the Community Center Inc. currently has. And for some of the operating costs, which would be shared with the community center, funds requested from the town, the town would expand the use of the building, operate most likely public restrooms, as well as potential office space for the Harbor Master, and continue to use it for compensation meetings and other meetings as had been done in the past. So again, Article 8 seeks vulgar authorization to proceed with that lease arrangement and to operate it, as I just suggested, between the town and the community center. So Article 8 is what is favored by the select board as well as the finance. The finance committee is still reviewing it. They'll make their final recommendation at the meeting. Article 11 was presented as a petition article, although the town, the select board, decided to move it on their own initiative as well, just to remove any concerns about procedures of the petition process. So in Article 11, what is being sought is authorization to have the town acquire the property, both the building and the land underneath it, as well as easement to access the community center building. And so either to purchase it through the normal real estate transaction process or to acquire it by eminent domain, and then to have the community center operating out of the building. So both of the two, the two articles, so again, Article 8 is for lease arrangement. Article 11 seeks to have the town purchase and own the property and then to have the community center operate out of it. So in summary form, those are Articles 8 and 11. So they both involve real estate transactions, which is why the planning board's opinion is needed to be presented at the town meeting for bylaw.
Okay, thanks, Greg. So I'd like to take these up one at a time for board questions. Again, we can support, not support, or just offer no opinion. So first, on Article 8, on the lease idea. Any questions or comments from the board?
I have a question.
Chris has a question.
Greg, would the lease not be annual lease enough for the building?
I mean, it's just maybe a nominal lease, so, you know, a few dollars a month. Literally, less than $10 a month.
Why was the lease terminated to begin with?
What the association has said is they felt like the building was not being utilized enough. And for the nominal lease arrangement that they had, they felt like the building should be used more. So they were looking to expand the use of the building.
So in the article, it says the agreement for up to 10 years. So I'm just wondering if there's any thought that it will be a shorter period, that it will be the full 10 years? Will it be an annual lease that's being negotiated every year?
It's anticipated to be a full 10-year lease with the ability for the town to terminate the lease at any time you could, you know, with, I think it's 60- or 90-day notice.
Christina?
Thanks, thanks, Ron. So I think, Ron, I sent you an email earlier, not too long ago. Did we get a copy of the lease? I feel like our packet was a little late on information personally.
There is no lease agreement that has been fully executed.
Okay.
This authorizes the select board to enter into such a lease.
So this lease then is between you and Harbor Point. So then, what type of agreement do you have with the community center?
Again, we've had conversations that we would sublease to them so that they could continue to operate as they have.
You've had conversations with the community center?
Correct. Yeah, with their board.
Sue?
I just want to clarify, the lease is with the town, correct? Between the town and Harbor Point?
Correct.
Mary?
So I have one overarching question and then I guess a bunch of little questions. So Greg, if you're in conversations with the Manchester Community Center and Harbor Point, which option does the Manchester Community Center prefer? What's best for them?
Oh, I think they would prefer Article 11 to go through, but that's, there's no guarantee that we would be successful in that.
But what have they voiced to you would be their concerns with Article 8?
What have they voiced were concerns? They haven't really voiced concerns about it. They said that that's a viable option, but they, I think, if they had their druthers, they would prefer to see Article 11 against the permanence of ownership.
Okay. So with the, the other questions were asked about the 10-year lease. If it is a 10-year, should the article be changed to 10 years as opposed to up to 10 years? It's up to...
The motion would be for 10 years.
10 years?
Yeah.
Becky, please don't interrupt.
It would be a 10-year renewable lease.
10 years?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, let's see. So the $10,000 is for the operating expenses for how long?
For the remainder of this fiscal year.
So for the year?
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year, okay. And I know in prior conversations, I think you had mentioned that for the Harbor Master Office, council on aging, public restrooms, that this building just, and to continue to maintain the community center as is, the building isn't big enough for all of that? Are you anticipating any expansion?
I believe the building is big enough for those uses. And we are not anticipating expansion beyond improvements to the restrooms.
Okay. And then just as part of the land use, I'm just trying to envision how it all operates in one building. So it doesn't have to be great detail, but kind of like, is the Harbor Master Office upstairs and events are going on downstairs? Like, how does that work? How does that, is there separate entrances? I'm just trying to visualize.
You know, again, all those details haven't been laid out, but yes, most likely, the office would be upstairs for the Harbor Master in order to keep that downstairs space available and open to public events.
And you can tell me if this isn't part of the land use, but if it's $10,000 for fiscal year expenses and extrapolate that forward, do you see the town paying that or that's 50% community center, 50% town? Like, what's the tax payers portion of this?
That $10,000 is anticipated to be the town's share for the remaining, you know, between now and July 1.
Okay. And then, and so, and then with Article 8, the community center could just business as usual as they do it today?
Correct.
That's all for right now. Thanks.
Becky, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to ask Greg if he might provide just a little clarification regarding how it came to be that Greg was asked to speak with the community center organization, as well as how the building is a separate, for the time being, is separate from the Harbors, plural, Harbors Point organization. I think there's a little confusion about that.
So a couple of things. So currently, the building is owned by the community center, the nonprofit, and it leases the land on which it sits. Under their current lease agreement, if the lease is terminated and the Community Center Inc. does not move the building, then the building is transferred, ownership of the building is transferred to Harbors Point Associates. So Harvard, the community center does not anticipate moving the building at the end of their lease. And so it would revert to the associate's ownership. When their lease was terminated, I had a meeting with the board and they wanted to know if there was anything that the town could do. And I said that we would be interested in helping out and pursuing a lease agreement with the town and that we would be happy to work with them on that arrangement. They were at a select board's meeting a couple of months ago where that was discussed, and the board asked me to try to negotiate an arrangement as we've discussed in Article 8 anticipations.
And just a little follow-up to that is that there was a misunderstanding, again, as frequently happens on Facebook, that the town was somehow causing a problem with the community center and its building. The only reason the town got involved was simply to try to help the community center when the town was asked to become involved. Is that what you, Greg, is that correct?
That's correct. We did not precipitate, we didn't initiate the discussions about the potential town use of the building. That came up as a way to come up with sort of a win-win. You know, if the town were to get involved, then there might be some benefit to the town as a whole in addition to what the community center provides for benefits as well as the community center itself. There had been some discussion, both informally and through Facebook, about whether or not a senior center might be, this might be adequate for a senior center. For a full-blown center, it is not large enough. It really is too small for what's anticipated in a full-functioning senior center in terms of, you know, full-size kitchen, the sort of daily meals, dining area, multipurpose rooms, meeting spaces, et cetera.
I think that what this process has shown us is that the community center has, there are three parts. There's the land, there's the building, and the community center's work. And that they're interrelated. And that the community center's work in its place is valued. I think maybe Harbor Point was surprised at the value that people placed on the community center and its work in that place. And I think that that has, you know, I felt like you could stand on this in front of the post office and raise a lot of money that weekend. But the community center is subject to a lease and that they're in this position. So I think that the select board and Greg have put to forward what seems to me to be a good compromise. I'm curious to hear what the community center's board's position is, but also what other alternatives there would be. And then the other piece is a question for Greg, which is if Article 8 passes and you're authorized to enter into a lease and the other Article 11 also were to pass, they're not mutually exclusive, are they? So that, at the very least, I think we would want Article 8 to pass that would allow us to enter into a lease. And because an eminent domain process and a taking of land is expensive and lengthy and uncertain. And so it seems to me Article 8 should pass, given the vast support for the community center. And then Article, the debate could be around whether a longer-term solution is something and whether that's a role for the town, because that's a much more expensive proposition for the town. I don't think, in general, we're not in the town, now I'm jumping to Article 11, but the town is not generally in the habit of owning land that another entity occupies. Owning land that another entity, I don't, I'm not sure, maybe there's precedent. But that would seem to me to be a larger discussion. So I think as far as Article 8, it seems to me, so am I right, Greg, that they're not mutually exclusive?
Well, that's correct. I mean, both of them authorize the board, but the board then, select board has the option of pursuing one or the other. If they were both, if they both were to pass, you know, it'd be up to the board then to decide which path to take. And I believe they're on record, I know they're on record of being more in favor of the lease arrangement than
Right.
than purchase the eminent domain, for sure.
Are we ready to take a motion on this?
Oh, I'll take, oh.
Ron, there's, this is...
Yes, not taking public comment.
Are we taking public comment on your article? I think you took a public comment.
Well, she represents the select board.
But we didn't ask for select board opinion.
She was glad.
Yes, for ours.
Was it, was it a question or whatever? About how this came about?
If this gentleman is from the community center, it might be.
Are you from the community center?
Co-president.
Okay.
And I think it would be.
I'll let you speak.
Thank you. Emre Kell, who is also co-president.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Patrick Mann, 384 Summer Street. So just to go back, a little history to this select board meeting in which Greg was charged with facilitating a meeting with us in Harbor's Point, which never happened. Harbor's Point kept pushing it off. Here's information that we received from Greg. They have refused to sit down with us. We still don't know exactly why we've been terminated, except for some of the reasons that they made available in public. We really don't know, except for what they wrote in the termination notice, which was to redevelop parts of the land. So that meeting never happened and Greg was talking with Harbor's Point. We don't know what the conversations were. We haven't sat down with them after those meetings. We've requested to sit down. So we don't know what they've talked about or what their plans are. We are in the dark. What we want to do as a community center is to continue our services to the town. We just had a wonderful wobbling goblin again this weekend. Over 200, 300 people down at the field. Obviously, if it was raining, our backup plan would be to have it in the community center. So our position is to keep the community center and its services alive is Article 8, Article 11, for us to keep the building and, if we can, control the land as well.
Thank you. Is there a motion on Article 8, Sarah?
I move that we recommend Article 8 consistent with the advice of the select board.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Did any discussion?
Um, yes.
Thank you.
I'm concerned hearing that there has not then been kind of a circular discussion with the community center board, the town, and Harbors Point. It does seem that the town is negotiating for the town, but not necessarily for the Manchester Community Center, and that concerns me very much. I would, I cannot see supporting this if we've left out the key player in this.
If I could respond to that, Ron?
Greg? Yes.
So I've had a diverse meeting with the community center board and I've been available to them every week if they so choose. So I believe I have kept them in the loop and that we are progressing as best we can to consummate a lease. I'm confident that the lease agreement is possible and happy to continue to include the community center board at every step of the way.
Any further on support?
Yeah, I have another question for you, Greg. And this is about a lease between the town and Harbors Point for the land on which the community center sits. Do you feel that we can, that we're able to, I mean, and leases and negotiations are subject to executive sessions. So I know you can't divulge the specific, every specific detail. But, you know, we're hearing, we just heard that the Harbors Point has been difficult or incommunicative, not communicative with their soon-to-be ex-tenant. Is that a, do we foresee that that should be, that would be a problem for the town? Is this a landlord that we want to enter into an agreement with? And then, I guess, the second question for Greg is if Article 8 fails, and I guess time-wise, if Article 11 even passes or fails, isn't it likely that the community center's lease will be expired at the end of this month? And they have no, it's kind of done, right? This is, seems to me, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes. I mean, you couldn't consummate a purchase or an eminent domain taking certainly in short order. That will take many months if not years if it goes to court, which I think it probably would. And it would be a very difficult case because in an eminent domain taking, you have to prove you have no other option. And I think that would be difficult to substantiate.
And doesn't, does Article 8 mean that there's another option? By definition?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? I think a roll call vote, Mary?
Ron, I have my hand up.
Christina?
I guess I'm really, I'm just concerned. I'm hearing two different things from Greg and the community center that there has been communication. And I'm just having trouble reconciling those two conversations. So have you had any conversations about moving any potential land in the town where the building could be moved to? And, I mean, have you, the three of you sat down in a room, the community center, you, the town, and Harbors Point? Like, I'm having trouble understanding what these negotiations and conversations looked like, whether emails, the in-person, like, I'm hearing two different stories.
Well, Harbors Point has not agreed to sit down with all three parties. They have not chosen to do that. So I've been basically being a shuttle, a shuttle negotiator between the two. I can't control, you know, what Harbor Point wants to do. They have, they have offered a 10-year lease. I've conveyed that to the board, the community center board. Community center board and I did talk about different land options for moving the building. I think the community center board, I can correct me, but I believe they concluded that they did not have the resources to do that. So.
So I guess, my final question is, what would prevent Harbors Point from doing the same to the town as what they did for, to the community center? And then do you have an idea of what the assessed value of the land is? Have you looked into that, Greg? What would be a reasonable amount that we would have to pay if Article 11 didn't go forward?
We'd have to buy the building and the land. You can't just buy the land because the building is under their ownership too as of a few more weeks.
Okay. So do you have an assessed value?
It's, I think the assessed value of the building is in the $700,000 range.
I'm sorry, you broke up, how much?
$700,000 plus or minus. I don't know exactly what the assessed value is. It's in that ballpark.
So I guess my other question, the first one, what's going to prevent them from doing the same thing with the town that they did with the community center? Like, it sounds good, but, you know, leases can be programmed, so.
Well, we're, we're negotiating a 10-year renewable lease, so they would not have the ability to give us 60 days' notice to kick us out.
Where, where's some of the places that you did consider moving the community center to?
What's before us?
I'm sorry, was that a question to me?
It was.
What was the question? Repeat the question, Christina.
You mentioned that you did discuss moving the building with the community center. I was curious what location you thought was suitable.
Yeah, we talked about next to the tennis courts, between the tennis courts and the parking lot on Brook Street.
So just on this motion, I think this is a good idea to at least get into a 10-year lease. A lot can happen in 10 years. A lot of other properties can become available. Let's at least, I'm for promoting this and having the town enter into a 10-year lease with this. So any further discussion on the motion to promote this? Otherwise, I'll take a roll call vote. Chris?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Yes.
Mary?
Uh, no, it doesn't appear to be what the community center wants or needs, so no.
Christina?
No.
The chair votes yes. So choose to support 4 to 2. So the next item is Article 13, which
Article 11.
Article 11, which is the purchase of a community center by eminent domain. I think Greg Davis is a precursor. Any further comments, Greg, before I ask the board for questions on the specifics?
Yeah, no, Ron, I have a few more questions. I think I'll give an overview of it.
Any questions from the board on the eminent domain? Christina?
So I guess, Greg, what's, in your opinion, what's the downside of this? Why should we not go forward with this?
Um, I, I think this is the fallback position. If the lease agreement doesn't get signed, and so I would, my own, my own recommendation would be, my own preference would be that this would wait until the annual town meeting. It's, um, it, it doesn't help the negotiation process in terms of the lease arrangement, just because it feels is a little threatening to the owners, I think.
So you have discussed the eminent domain option with the owners of Harbor's Point?
I'm sorry?
You have discussed this article with the owners?
No, I haven't.
Of Harbor's Point?
No, I haven't discussed it with them specifically, no. I mean, they're aware of it.
I, you just said it seems threatening, so that's just your opinion. Is that, I'm, I'm just trying to get the facts. I'm sorry, I didn't mean it like to be accusatory or whatnot. I'm just, I was just trying to get in your head why this would be a bad thing.
Yeah, as I said.
Or why we shouldn't go for it.
That's, that's my opinion, so that was my speculation.
Okay, thank you.
Sue?
What I'd like to ask is the people who brought the petition, why this would be a good thing? And that's not really a question for Greg to answer. What are the, why should the town support this? The select board has decided not to. I can't figure out a reason why this is a good thing.
Any more, I'll start with the board.
Um, I think that's exactly, I think I go back to the the sense that the community center is a valued asset, their work is valued, and that I suspect that people felt strongly that they needed to do something. That something, these things were kind of going in parallel, I think. And in the absence, there was, it, it seemed to me, anyway, as somebody who's served on the community center board, that there was an absence of information that was accurate and, and forward-moving. And so I think this was her response, is my, my hunch, or at least part of that, and the, and, um, and again, to commend the people who thought, thought this up and thought it was a good idea, but it seems to me that it's expensive, un, unclear how, and the other pieces, we'd have to come before us to divide the land. It's one parcel of land, it doesn't have frontage, it doesn't meet any of the division of land requirements, and I, I, you know, we would need, they would need a variance, I believe, or a, um, to, to divide the land from the other land. So that's another just procedural issue here, um, that, um, and it seems to me to be premature. And that if, if a partnership works, the other thing is that I, the community center is not the town. And so the community center, for the purposes of the community center, I, I do have a hard time as much as I value the community center, and I do greatly. The, the community center is not currently a town function. It is a separate 501(c)(3) with its own separate building. And so it seems to me to take a little bit more thought and planning and a determination if a partnership between the Manchester Community Center and the town can work productively. And then perhaps, um, we move forward with some sort of a ownership model. But, but to jump to that ownership model until we have proven the, whatever that partnership looks like, seems to me to be premature.
Does the eminent domain takeover include parking, which would be on private property, access, which would be through private property? Is that an issue? Would that be an issue, or would that come under the eminent domain, would be taking? I think it would be adversarial with the owners about how much parking and any comments on, is, is parking included? It's just building, or is it where people can get to it?
Seems to me the article's not specific.
And we don't have anyone who drafted the article here to explain it to us.
May I have a comment?
Chris?
I, um, my opinion on this, for what that's worth, is that the eminent domain is going to cost, or any acquisition is going to cost a lot more than the assessed value of the building of seven hundred thousand. What you're basically doing is putting a hole in the middle of a developable parcel that's owned by this condo association. So they, uh, you know, I don't know what the value of the hole is in this development plan, but it would sure screw up any kind of future development of the parcel, so I think you're looking at a probably a multimillion-dollar acquisition cost by the time we're through with the lawsuits. Not to mention the legal cost of doing an eminent domain, which is not going to be cheap. So, you know, I guess the town meeting will have to appropriate the funds at some point, and that's a whole separate. You know, we may go through this whole exercise and then town meeting won't appropriate the funds, so I think it's kind of a sort of a rabbit hole without much more information that we're not going to have at the time of town meeting.
Sue?
I just, I wanted to make clear that I didn't mean that the community center wasn't worth supporting. It is a worthwhile organization and I support it also. That was not the point of my question. Point of my question was, I would like to hear from the people who drafted the citizens' petition, what they're trying to achieve by going to the extreme remedy of eminent domain. And, I mean, there's so many, um, problems with this path. But to use eminent domain in this particular situation, it just opens up such a broad range of problems for future transactions with private landowners.
Christina?
So I guess, I'm, I'm just not, Greg seemed to think that this was a good idea and just thought maybe we should wait until the spring. But, I mean, that's not an option, so it sounded like you were somewhat positive with, with this idea.
So I can respond. I, I, I'm not optimistic at all prevailing. I don't think a judge would rule in our favor. I don't think the, I don't think the association will, will will negotiate just on a transactional basis. I think we would have to go to eminent domain, and I'm not optimistic that a judge would rule in our favor. So, but my comment was that I, I see that as a fallback, but I don't see it as a, as a a fallback that will be ultimately successful. But I understand why, why the community center folks would, would want to see this as a potential fallback. It would be the last, be the last hope to prevail. I'm not optimistic that it could, but I, but I understand why it would be viewed as, as, as the last hope.
Okay, so another question is, do we need to, Greg, do you know, does this article need to go forward with some type of money attached to it, or does, can it go as is?
Well, it can go as is, so if, if it were to go forward, then we would have to come back to the voters for a dollar amount in order to, in order to make it, um, viable and successful. So it would, it would, in essence, be a two-step process. This would authorize to enter into the process, and then the voters would have a second bite at it, if you will, by deciding whether or not to appropriate dollars.
All right, so I don't, I don't really know if I understand the timeline, but, so well, they may, you know, lose the building, and then is your understanding if they, if the town does take it, do they then owe? Do they owe for the building and the land at that point, even though they own the building at this point? Is that question clear?
I didn't quite understand, no, I'm sorry.
All right, so right now, the land is owned by Harbor's Point, just as everyone owns it, but they don't have the deed to the land, if I'm understanding this correctly. They own the building, they own the walls. So if
Not, not quite yet, but they will be. Assuming that the community center doesn't move it, that they will, they will become the owners.
Okay, so, um, my question is, if this is taken by eminent domain, domain, in your opinion, would then the town have to pay for the building even though today it's owned by the community center? But sometime in the future, they would then have to pay for the building in addition to the land, even though, so that, that's what I'm trying to get at?
Yeah.
So that they double pay for it, even though they own it today, the town would have to pay for it? Say thirteenth, just for argument's sake.
Right, correct. By the, by the, by the time that we would be in a position to take the property, it'll be under the ownership of Harbor's Point. Harbor's Point.
So you've actually, has anyone attempted to negotiate with the owners to see if they would sell the land, and that's just a hard no?
That's my understanding, yes.
But you're the one that was negotiating, right? But you didn't have, did you discuss that or not?
Is, is this relevant to us voting on Article eleven?
I'm trying.
So they have indicated no desire to sell.
Okay, thank you.
Christina?
That's okay, me.
Sarah?
Thank you. I just want to clarify, I think Christina is actually bringing, and Greg are bringing up a really important point, at least in my mind, in terms of sequence. So when the lease expires in, end of this month, whenever that is, sometime in this month, the, um, without any action, the Harbor Point becomes the owner of the building. They already own the land, or the community center can move it, two options, right? But eminent domain could take one year, two years, three years, at which point Harbor Point may have destroyed the building, built something else, put in whatever, or, you know, or at least applied to do that, whatever, whatever their plans are. So, so an eminent domain process without a, the lease in eight is probably a fool's errand, it seems to me. So that's just a statement. The question I have for Greg is, is Article eleven binding? Or is it simply advisory to the select board?
Correct, it's, it's, it's an authorization vote, so it does not require the board to act, it authorizes them. If they so choose, they can.
And does that authorization, would that authorization expire? So let's say, uh, the lease proceeds with a ten-year lease, and year four, it's a wonderful partnership. And then some sort of, you know, the, them, is the board still authorized to think hard about, uh, a, a ownership of the land beneath the building, given this article?
Well, technically, it, I don't think it expires. I think town council would probably advise after some, you know, how many years, they, they'll revote it perhaps, but, um, just to make sure that
But you could, you could begin the process and, because eminent domain requires a town vote anyway, right?
We have to go back for money anyways, yes.
Right, so, so, okay, does, so but am I correct that if eight doesn't pass, this is not likely to save the community center building as we know it? At least from your opinion, Greg?
That, yes, that, that is my feeling, yes.
And then I just have one other, just point, at least my opinion, is that it's generally not the town's role to negotiate land deals for a nonprofit or a but, so I, again, I think that the town has recognized the value of the community center and the, seems to me the lease idea is a good thing, but.
Um, I don't know that I have too much to add to this, but, um, I do feel that it's important to negotiate for this process to be the, the positive negotiation for the Manchester Community Center. And I think the conversation started out that the Man, Manchester Community Center would back Article eleven over Article eight, so I want to just throw that out there with my understanding is the amount of signatures that came in on the petition were probably around ten percent of registered voters in town, so that's a decent, um, turnout for, for support of that. And I would caution the board also to stop throwing around numbers that we actually have no data for, you know, million dollar here and million dollar there and assumptions and da-da-da-da. We don't have any data to say any of that, so we really shouldn't be doing that. We don't have the numbers. So I, you know, this is somewhat confusing, um, with the building and the land and the this and the that, and I think in some regards, we're losing focus what the importance is here, and that is for the Manchester Community Center to remain in Manchester and, um, and I, I'm just currently not seeing how all of the proposed things in Article eight can fit in and still be a standalone Manchester Community Center. So I, you know, I think voters may be confused as well. So, I mean, if Manchester Community Center has said they're in support of Article eleven, I would support that as well.
Well, let's hear from the Manchester Community Center.
Thank you, appreciate it. Patrick Mean, three, post on the street. So I'm not a lawyer, but I did help craft the, the article there. And just to clarify timelines, um, we were asking, we, the select board had charged Greg with having us sit down with Harbor's Point, which never happened, and it dragged on and on and on. We were in a corner and we needed to act. And one of the acts was to, um, create an article to take control of the land ourselves. Only after we got the signatures and everything else, the signatures and printed, presented them to the town, did a competing article from town appear, um, which we weren't notified of, not that we should be, but it came after the fact. So we were acting in our own best interest for the community center to somehow keep the community center, which everyone agrees values. And if we're going to be in that space, or if we're going to be in a ten-year lease in that space, that space is still going to be taken and not allow any development that might be better off if, 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 if it wasn't there. So if the space is going to be there as a community center, we would like to continue serving the town in all the ways we can. And we do have town services there. We have council on aging, yeah, yoga classes and strong women's classes there. We do have town events there all the time. So I just wanted to clarify some of the timeline as to how these articles came to fruition. Our back was against the wall, and we have a dedicated volunteer group to, to fight for that.
Sue?
Now you go.
I, I, uh, wanted to make a point of clarification timeline. The select board did not charge the town administrator prior to the back against the wall. We were notified that the community center was in a bind. And if there was a way that the town might be able to help a non-town, nonprofit entity. The town typically does not get involved in situations like that. It's, it's not our responsibility or our purview. We value the community center and all it does immensely. But it is a private nonprofit. It is not affiliated with the town. So when the select board was asked, was there anything we could do to help? We asked if Greg could do that, and it was when your back was up against the wall. It wasn't prior to that. And at least what we were told by people involved with the community center. Greg has been trying to help as much as possible and has not, he's been under the gun a little bit from some people for trying to help rectify a situation that would benefit the town as well as the nonprofit community center. That's what got us here. Um, the select board is not in favor of eminent domain from someone who has generously offered up land use with the building on it for the time being. But this is where we are now, so if we can enter into a friendly lease agreement, that is and I, when I say it as the select board, I am not acting as the select board representative stating this fact. I'm just relaying what occurred in a meeting. The select board was in favor of this friendly negotiation.
Sue.
Could I ask Patrick a question? So now that you have Article 8, to get to what Mary was discussing. If Article 8, if, if this process had already been completed, would you still have drafted and put forth Article 11?
With the non-information that we have about what would transpire, with that article, we would, we would still, because we don't, we don't have any information as to how the sharing, there would have to be sharing, there would have to be space for Harvest Masters. So we don't know any of that information at this point. So, yeah, I'm, we'd still be in favor of ours.
Chris? So at that point, however, if the town took it from the domain, the town would own it and you'd still have that problem. There'd be a town building and now you'd be trying to negotiate a lease with the town and to occupy space in it, along with other town functions.
We would, we would pledge to buy the property off the town.
You would pledge to buy the property off the town?
The land, sorry.
I, Raquel Prezek, 109 School District.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Raquel Prezek.
Okay.
Co-president. It's not that I'm saying that we weren't, I mean, we want to operate in, in good faith with everybody. And it's, we've been behind the eight ball, we, we've not been given a lot of information, we always seem to be responding, so. Well, the lease agreement does sound pretty attractive, I, you know, seems very attractive. Given how we've been treated and how, you know, Harvest Point has treated us, it's hard to imagine that the new lease agreement could be any different or could be terminated under similar circumstances. So it doesn't give us security long-term that the Manchester Community Center could potentially operate for another 47 years.
I'll start with you, Sarah.
I don't see how the eminent domain, even if it were successful, has, does anything besides have the town own the building and the land and some future select board negotiate the functions therein. Even if you, even if a nonprofit called the Manchester Community Center wants to buy the, wants to buy it, the town would then have to enter into a town meeting vote to sell it to you. Because it wouldn't be yours, it would be the town's. And so I think that's a lot of what ifs at that point. And eminent domain seems to me that Article 8 proves that there's another alternative. And that is the test. So kind of behind the eight ball on the eminent domain, A, because you're not going to own it after, you know, in 2024, regardless. If, if Article 8 doesn't pass, then, then it, so you've got to get behind Article 8, everybody needs to be behind Article 8. And it seems to me that for whatever reason the owner of the land is not wanting to deal with you, for whatever reason, you're in a great situation that the town is willing to be the broker. That's at least where I, what I see. And that, yes, there's going to be some quid pro quo in terms of using some of those community space, community center space for town functions. But that's so much better than what the alternative is, which is Harvest Point owns the land. They're going to take the building and they're going to do whatever they're going to do with it. Maybe they're going to run a community center there, maybe they're going to tear it down. I don't, I have no information. But it seems to me that Article 8 is something everyone should get behind and that we should be pledging to figure this out for the good of the town and the good of the community, the functions and the great work that the community center has done for many years. Then as for eminent domain, I think it's just, if that's our, if that's the only path that comes out of, out of town meeting, I'll be, and I actually signed the petition because it was before I had heard about the lease option. So I didn't know there was another alternative brewing, so I signed the petition because I too value the community center. But it would be a town taking. So it would, the land would be owned by the town, the whatever is on the land at that time. And so we don't know what the assessed value would be at that time, but it would be something more than nothing. It would be a significant amount of money, meaning it would be something more than nothing. So it seems to me that that, that you're, you really need to have people support Article 8. And that the other can come up again in a year or two years, once there's a partnership that has been proven and there's, if that's the right, and may, hopefully, maybe the, the landowner will see the value of this partnership and want to create a longer-term situation. I agree, 10 years is short, but it's way more than 10 days or whatever it is we've got. So, I, and then as for this article, I feel like we should follow the select board's lead and not support that at this time.
Chris?
So it's, listening to all this, it sounds to me like the best strategy for the community center is to find another location. It's going to be much more cost-effective on another building in the downtown than to, than to try to pay the town back for the cost of an eminent domain taking on a very expensive piece of land. So I, my advice to you, without any data or anything else, is to get this lease signed, occupy the space and then go find a place in town where you can be safe.
Did you have any more? Christina?
Thanks, Ron. I'm just trying to think, 10 years doesn't sound like a very long time. I'm just trying to think, Greg, do we lease any other things in town? Does Black Earth have a lease? Like, how long is their lease?
It's also a 10-year renewable lease. I believe.
Okay.
I'll have to double check.
The schools, excuse me, I'm trying to think, the school district leases land from the town?
I was just wondering if there's something more than 10 years. And I guess the other thing is, Greg, if for some reason, you know, on the 13th, none, neither of these happen, I mean, I'm just trying to think out a little bit long-term. Do, does the town need to vote if the community center chose to move it to save that parcel that you had just suggested? Do we need, as a town, to approve that or do, can the select board approve that moving?
So if we, if we were leasing that land to the community center, that would require a town meeting vote.
Okay, my question is, if neither one of these things are, are passed on November 13th, my understanding, they still have another 30 days to move the building if they so choose, right? So my question is, does the town people, a town vote, is that required to use the town land? Or can the select board say, okay, community center, you can now move your building to the land that you said next to the town's course? Do we need?
No, that would require a town meeting vote.
It would?
Yeah, it's a change in use of the land. So any, any change in use of town land needs, needs voter approval. And I, I believe that Patrick and.
That doesn't sound right.
Patrick and Raquel can, can chime in, and I believe they have to notify Harvest Point prior to the 13th in terms of what they, if they plan to move the building or not.
I'll make a motion.
So what you just said, the change in the use of the land, could you try to keep that, if that doesn't sound correct?
Can I clarify that for Greg?
It's a lease, it was a lease.
It's, it would be entering into a lease of town land, which would require this exact process. And there is a longer-than-10-year lease for the school district for all the school lands. And a joint ownership agreement of Brook Street Field.
And the housing authorities.
And the housing authorities.
Black Earth, I thought was like a 20.
Housing authority. A 20-year lease for the district.
Okay, any other comments from the board? I'll take a motion, if not.
There's another hand up, but are you taking public comment?
I'm taking a public comment, public comment can be made at town meeting, just trying to get approval.
I'll make a motion that the planning board follow the select board and FinCom and recommend a no vote on Article 11.
A second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Okay, without any discussion, I'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Foley?
Explain what an affirmative.
So, yeah, a yes vote would be to vote, to recommend a no vote.
Oh, no.
So against.
No, Mrs. Creighton?
Yes.
Mr. Oldman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Lucio?
No.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, thank you. Next one is Article 13. Conserving Manchester Housing Authority wetlands, conserving, converting Manchester Housing Authority wetlands to Powder House Hill in exchange for land to expand Newport Park. Did I get that right?
No, Ron, no.
Okay.
No, that's a matter of fact.
Sorry. But I was, uh, could you explain that then?
Is this a citizens' petition, this one?
So, Ron, if you'd like me to, I could.
Yeah.
So Article 13 asks voters to to approve calling the Powder House Hill lands for, for parcels that make up the Powder House Hill lands that the town currently owns. And designate the lands as subject to Article 97 of the amendments to the state constitution. So Article 97, as people may or may not know, if, if lands are designated as Article 97 lands, then there is a more rigorous process by which you have to follow to change the use of the land. So if, if, if indeed the lands are designated under the dictates of Article 97, then in order to change the land, it would have to go through a multi-step process. It includes a unanimous vote of the Conservation Commission. It requires a two-thirds vote of both houses of the state legislature, both the House and the Senate. It requires approval by state agencies. And it requires a exchange of equal valued lands. So if there were five acres of land that you wanted to take out of Article 97, a minimum of five new acres would have to be secured and put into similar restrictions. Typically, they require a two-to-one or a three-to-one match. So instead of five acres, you, you would probably have to do 10 acres or more. So we're waiting for final confirmation, but I believe because of the vote taken in 1977, which conveyed the care and custo, custody of these parcels to the Conservation Commission for conservation purposes. I believe that these lands are already under Article 97. But we are waiting.
Fire.
We are waiting confirmation from town council on that.
I'm going to get on so I can block people.
Okay, so I will take some comments from the board or questions?
So, since this is a citizens' petition, are, again, I have the same question to the citizens who drafted it, are they here?
I'm one of them.
Great, and you are?
Morgan Evans, 24 minute out.
Great. Sorry. Could I ask a question to Mr. Evans? I'm sorry about that, Ron.
Go ahead.
Tell me why you brought the citizens' petition? What, why should the town approve this, Article 13?
Precisely, as Greg Federsfield just mentioned, it is unknown at this time if they're absolutely protected. It's a rededication.
So what is the positive for the town for the rededication?
Self-evident, it's to make sure they're dedicated in Article 97.
So tell me, why, why does, why does the town of Manchester want that?
Why are the woods precious? Because they're in the center of town, people enjoy them. For example, right behind the Scout House, people walk, the Scouts use them right behind there. I used to live in Upper Pine Street, I'd walk there with my dog all the time. It's, it's, it's really precious, priceless that we have town, you know, woods in the center of town.
And one more question? This one. So is the petition brought because there's a fear from the petitioners that the land is all of a sudden not going to be protected? In the near future, is there some use that the petitioners are concerned about?
Fear is a little word, I would say it is to ensure that they stay protected.
Chris, did you have a question?
I have a similar question to Sue's, actually. Was there some, was the, the the proposed exchange of land with Newport Park for an equal amount of land within the Powder House Hill brought to the housing authority by Steve Gang, was that an impetus for this?
I did read that in the Cricket first I heard about it. It did make me think about multiple petitions that we could do to preserve the historical character of the town and its open space.
Mary?
So, reading Greg's paragraph on this, so, so it stated right here that the town voted in 1977 to, to transfer these parcels of land into conservation. And Greg believes that they're already Article 97. So it appears that this article is just ensuring that, and it looks like it's listing out four parcels, that, that the entirety of Powder House has the same Article 97 safety on it that all the other parcels do. So I think it's not doing anything different than what we think we already have. We just want to apparently make sure that it truly is preserved as it was voted in in 1977. So I think this is a good thing for the town, I think we want to preserve our open space. Powder House is obviously iconic to the town. And I would see no downside to putting these four parcels in Article 97 if they're not already. I'm kind of surprised the town doesn't know if it is or not. So hopefully, we can get an answer on that quickly.
Christina?
Sorry, turn on my mute button here, thanks, Ron. I guess, so I just quickly looked at the open space and rec plan and it does list Powder House as Article 97 protected, but we just don't have documentation for it? Is that what I'm hearing, Greg?
No, we have the, we have the 1997 vote. We haven't been able to track down the original vote when the land was, was purchased in the beginning. So the, the language in 77 said to continue the conservation purposes for which the land originally acquired. It would be helpful to have that original language. We just, we haven't been able to locate that original language. That would, that would help solidify the feeling that this is indeed Article 97 lands already.
All right, so if, if the town already thought this was Article 97 protected, just making sure it is, I think what I've read in some of these is that maybe the language in some of these cases in protecting land, it just may not be, so you need to like make sure your language is tightened up, is that, I think that's the effort here? So if we already thought it was Article 97, I shouldn't be any concern, right? Just making sure it's Article 97 protected? Is that, am I restating that correctly? Greg?
Yes, I believe that's, that's accurate.
Okay.
Sarah?
Is, a question and I guess a comment. Greg, is this a binding article?
This is a binding article, it would require a two-thirds vote.
And then the second, then my comment, is given that this idea about Newport Park recently surfaced as a way to protect the Newport Park wetlands and lands that are, have high conservation value, and potentially the idea is to facilitate some open, some affordable housing, and we have long wrung our hands around affordable housing. It seems to me that the land is protected would need a significant vote of the town if it were to be a land swap of some sort with the Housing Authority, so it's not like the town is going to have no say here. But why would we add a, potentially another layer of protection if it doesn't already exist, and it may already exist? And tie our hand, further make affordable housing more difficult, or at least cut off a tool that might help to facilitate some affordable housing in this town? So I would strongly recommend that we vote, know, that we suggest that, you know, and I'm a conservationist, but that in this case that it's premature and, and it's not helping us to explore all opportunities for mutual conservation benefit and affordable housing benefit. So I, I think that it's, the timing of this is interesting, and, and we're missing an opportunity if we vote to do this if the land is not already in Article 97, which sounds like we're on steroids now, so. Ron?
You have a, spoken.
Yeah, so, I just have, I'm sorry, I have just a comment on this, which is, not only is affordable housing, but more importantly, actually, from a conservation point of view, doing this land swap, if it's even feasible at this point, would be protecting a vulnerable piece of more, more important conservation land with an intermittent stream on it, in exchange for a piece of land that doesn't have the same environmental value. So it's actually going to require now that the Housing Authority disturb some environmentally sensitive land that could have been avoided. It may be unavoidable anyway, so I, I don't feel strongly about this one way or the other, it's probably Article 97 already, but it's kind of short sighted to, to not allow this kind of, I think, elegant swap of land to further protect the Powderhouse environmental system.
The swap of land is Article 14, correct?
No.
There.
No.
So, so.
Mary?
I, I, again, would like to caution the board that affordable housing is not on the table. I'm an affordable housing proponent and usually get voted down on this board for more affordable housing, so that is not the issue. The issue is, we're discussing an article about open space, we don't have an affordable land swap in front of us, so we can't mix the two. And I would say to Chris's point, if they're sensitive land over by Powderhouse, we should look into adding that into an Article 97 position to protect that, if it's, if it's the wetlands, I would love to see added space to the open space. But I think it's very important if we're going to try to, you know, use affordable housing as a tool to say, oh, let's not protect the land that we think is already protected anyway, I think that's kind of going down.
You know, Mary, that's pretty rich, this is a tool to stop affordable housing using the environment, which is a weapon that's used over and over, and here it is again. I think that's really disingenuous.
Chris, one, I wasn't done speaking.
One at a time, one at a time, Mary.
I wasn't done speaking, and, you know, again, your usual pattern of trying to argue every point I make.
Point of order.
Let's not make personal attacks.
So. So the, we think as a town, this is already Article 97 land, I think we should just dot our i's and cross our t's and ensure that it is protected land as residents that lived here in 1977 voted for it to be, and I, I can't imagine anybody actually having a problem with that. So I would be in support of this, I think it's important to maintain Powderhouse and the lands, ensure that all the parcels, because it's broken up into many parcels, and not all of it is town owned, some of it's other entity owned, that it all has the same protections.
Sue?
So, question, I noticed that the Select Board has not weighed in yet, Ron, do you know anything about that?
No, I don't, I think they're going to make a decision on town floors from what I read.
I'm just wondering, Greg, do you know if they're waiting for additional information?
They, they were hoping to have a definitive opinion from Town Council before making their recommendation.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Should we do the same?
I have a question. Greg, there's, there are three parcels listed, or four parcels listed? Is there, so I want to just clarify my earlier statement, which is, I think we're talking about a very small portion of one of these parcels, not all of those parcels, or any assertion that we're going to develop all of Powderhouse Hill for affordable housing in any way. So that, in case people are worried about that, I don't think that's on anybody's mind. I think we're talking about a small acre-ish, I don't know, a small portion of one of these parcels, and do you know which of these four parcels might be, is the one that's bordering Newport Park, a buddy?
I forgot, I didn't bring that, that home with me.
Well, that's okay, maybe we.
We can say, I can tell you which one it is, yes.
Yes, but maybe we could restrict our endorse, or simply comment on that one as a, because I don't, I, I agree with the sentiment that Powderhouse Hill is a valued resource, but now we're seeing it has, that the town lands have a multiplicity of resource opportunity here with the ability to facilitate what might be affordable housing, and I, and I do think that is germane, so. So maybe if we can figure out which parcel it is, and, or simply, at least my sense would be to take no action except to recommend striking whichever parcel it is from the article.
And can I make one other comment on? The Housing Authority and the Affordable Housing Trust that involves this have not taken a position on it. This was a proposal brought to us by the Chairman of the Conservation Commission, just want to make that clear. It's not, not a proposal that the Housing Authority or the Affordable Housing Trust is making at all. So this was brought by the Chair of the Conservation Commission.
Would the board consider making a recommendation on town floor after more information comes in, or if it comes in, could?
That sounds smart.
Postpone any kind of decisions, will we get more data?
Yeah, I mean, I, I do think since we're the land use board, if we knew where specifically these parcels of land were, that would be helpful, and that if Greg has an indication of when, we will know definitively if it's already 90, Article 97 protected, and then it may be a mute point.
Mr. Chair?
Not taking comments. We're not taking comments.
Can I, can I just ask a question about, take comment? Is this a public meeting? I just have one.
No, it's not, it's not a public hearing, it's, it's for the board to decide on four warrant articles.
I just had a question.
Public comments could be made at town meeting.
That's going to be too late for this question, and it won't be pertinent. I appreciate that, but I just need to get some clarification on Article 97, and I truly appreciate the board taking the time to do this. It's just one question.
I'm not taking public comments at this time, we're just trying to get through these.
I understand, but for the public.
The board's going to decide on what, what we want to do, the public will decide at town meeting.
But they need to understand what they're deciding.
Well, we're asking questions.
We can't do that, though, it's not being allowed.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, thank you very much, we'll make note of that.
Make note of it. Any other comments from the board?
I have the parcels up, if you want to look at them. I believe that it's, the parcel along Pine Street is 4204. I don't know, not on, but.
That's my understanding as well.
So.
Do we have any acreage?
18.
18, just that one parcel?
I don't have that verified document.
Should we postpone our decision, I'm thinking till we get more information, or take no action, or? To Mary's question, Greg, do you think we'll get an answer from Town Council on the 97, Article 97?
Yeah, I certainly hope you have it by the end of this week at the latest.
Can I kind of make a motion, have a move that we defer any action of this warrant article at the town meeting?
I second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Ron, if I could just comment on that?
Yes, Greg.
So if you're going to do that, then you need to have a meeting.
Yeah, we have to decide.
Right before town meeting, or.
Yeah, so that's an agenda item, I have to the board, I was going to suggest a, I have a placeholder on the agenda to discuss meeting ahead of town meeting on the 13th at the high school, is that where the, is that where town meeting is, at the high school?
Elementary.
At the elementary school, maybe a half hour, an hour before town meeting. I hope that would be when we can meet and make a decision, final determination, should have all the data in, so. Why don't we, on, on Chris's motion to postpone any decision, and why don't we just amend that to agree to meet one hour before town meeting? Can I make a friendly? Any further discussion?
Could we just clarify what data points we would need before that to discuss?
Yeah, Greg, so what, what information will we have, and what, what is, what is the board looking to see for information? Determination of?
So I certainly can provide the, the parcel maps, and I can provide the, the opinion from, from Town Council.
I think that would be what we wouldn't need.
The opinion, or if, if these four parcels are actually, are already Article 97, is that the opinion?
Yes. So that.
It's opinion, it's just, just a piece of paper.
Adele, did you have a formatting comment?
I have a comment about meeting at the elementary school, I will reserve you a room and let you know what room you are reserved for prior to town meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
On the motion, any further discussion, otherwise I'll take a roll call vote. Sue Filbert?
Yes.
Chris Olney?
Yes.
Sarah Creighton?
Yes.
Mary Foley?
Yes.
Christina Delicio?
Yeah.
And Chair votes yes. So Article 14, similar. Any further comments, Greg, on Article 14?
In this article, we're dealing with the same parcels, and it is authorizing, it also says direct, but it can't direct the board, it can only authorize, to convey these four parcels to a nonprofit entity. And so to, it says to a charitable corporation or trust whose purpose includes the preservation of land or water, for the purpose of prohibiting development, basically. And so this would take town ownership away and put it in the hands of a third party.
Can I have a question?
A question?
So Greg, what would the process be if this is Article 97 land, would that not require?
It requires that same process as, as changing use, so again, it starts with a unanimous vote of the Conservation Commission, it requires two-thirds vote of the electorate, it requires two-thirds vote of both the House and Senate, and Beacon Hill, requires sign off by a few state agencies, and there would be requirement to show that there's something to be gained by, by, by the process. They could ask for additional lands to be preserved by the town, it's sort of amended that way, but it involves that process.
And, and just to follow, does, does, has the Conservation Commission, they going to stand on this? They would have to provide unanimous approval?
No, they have not.
Sarah?
Greg, is, is this binding, given that, that a conservation group is not named?
So it, it is not binding, it authorizes the board to, it authorizes the Select Board to pursue this path?
And what is the advantage?
I think you need to ask the petitioners that question.
First, a point of order. It is not proper for an elected official to impure my motives, it's not here, it's just on that.
Not impure your motives.
So my motive is, because that's the question, this is turned into the question, my motive is to preserve the land for conservation, not for any other purpose, and please do not assign a purpose to me, because you do not know my motives any better than I know my motives. Thank you.
So are you?
What is the advantage? What question I have is, what is?
So, our local land banks, conservation trusts have done excellent job preserving and taking care of land. When you go to the trustees' land, the Green Belt MECT, which has adjoining land, or the Audubon, has just done a really good job in Wannam, where they put in a nice trail for the blind, it's a 14th trail in the state, and they have a string along the trail, and they have brown signs for the trails, and they just do a way better job of conserving and making it more open to the public. If you think of what the trustees did at, we used to be known as, like, these rocks, now the boulders, you know, there's parking there. You go to, you know, you go to, you go to Cranes Beach, it's excellently maintained, but also they have programs for the public, to provide access through a conservation trust and to maintain the land as open space. And there is no other motive.
Okay, any other comments from the board?
I guess I would do the flip side of that. I, um, I guess Greg can, um, speak the, so the select board, um, does not recommend approval on fourteen and so for the flip side of what was just answered, what is the disadvantage to doing this?
You, you asking me that question?
Yes.
Disadvantage is that it removes the town, uh, for having any, um, say over, over the lands. It, it removes that, that control that the town currently has.
Could you just, I, I don't know, I mean, what does the town currently do with Powder House? I mean, I know it, um, probably goes through and clears some trails and things like that. Is there anything unique that the town does that these other, um, corporations or trusts don't do?
Not at the moment, no.
So, I think I have to disclose that I'm a, a board member of Greenbelt and my husband's a board member of MECT. I don't think that affects my, um, opinion here, except to say that, um, when we lose control, when we are not the people who are clearing the, when the town is not the, if, if trails are what we care about and we use, if I want to have, if as a town member, I wanna have the trails cleared more often, I can make a petition at town meeting to add ten thousand dollars to the warrant for trail clearing. But if we are now dependent upon a third party, uh, to maintain trails on our behalf, yeah, you know, it is a, it is, we lose control of the very thing that we want and I, I feel like there's not, I, I think if we have a, if there's a deficiency in the way the town is doing it, then let's remedy that in a different way. But I don't see that that's the problem. And then, being a board member, I do know that, um, of Greenbelt, uh, that stewarding land is expensive and it's a challenge. Um, and we also don't know whether any of those land groups, uh, would actually receive ownership of this land. So, it's kind of a, without, um, a specific negotiation with those groups. And that's one of the things that, at least from Greenbelt's perspective, is always considered is, can we afford to steward the land? What's the conservation value for, um, and this obviously, these parcels have conservation value. I don't disagree with that. I just don't see that this gets us, um, any advantage and potentially has a disadvantage.
Thank you. Christina?
I have another question for Greg. Um, so how much money does the town spend on maintaining the woods a year?
Yeah, I don't have a specific number for you. We, um, we have allocated through capital to the Conservation Commission over the last ten years in the area of fifty thousand.
If we did put it into some kind of, um, trust, would it, would the town lose any financial benefit from having it? Is there a financial benefit from having it or turning it over to a conservation trust?
Uh, well, uh, oftentimes, a, a trust will want to have, um, funds given to it before they take on ownership. So, they may want in essence of an endowment to, if, if they're to agree to take it over. So, there could be some costs there.
Okay, and so, and one of those parcels is protected, right? I think it's MECT does own already one of.
That's the fifth parcel. That, there's a, there's a fifth parcel that MECT owns, yes.
So, MECT already owns one. Um, I guess the difference, if people ask the question, I mean, when you do, the conservation trust protects it in perpetuity, right? It protects it forever. So, that's a plus. And you know what can or cannot happen to it versus the unknown. So, I think that's just a generic question. And if we do value it, I, I mean, I don't know why we are shying away from protecting it further. We already think it's ninety-seven protected and if we're trying to, you know, save money and things like that, why not? Give it to someone else to take care of and take it off the town's books and take it off the town's financials. I see it as a win-win.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thanks, uh, Mary?
Yeah, I guess I hadn't really thought about it, but what Christine was just saying, if, if it's currently Article ninety-seven land, which means it can, any of the parcels could be voted out to do something else. If it goes into one of these charitable corporations, it becomes per, truly permanently protected, which I think everybody, most, a lot of residents at town already think it is. So, to take that one step further, I think makes sense if we're really talking about protecting the, protecting the land, like, let's make sure it actually is protected, um, and with the potential cost benefit. Did FinCom weigh in on this? Takes no position. Um, so, yeah, I'd be interested what the, the financial aspect of it actually was. And, yeah, I see it as more permanent protection. So, I think that's a good thing.
Greg, do you know what the select board's reason were for, uh, voting against this?
Yeah, again, just, I think the primary reason was, um, not wanting to lose town control of the property.
Sure. Greg, is it, um, possible that a third-party, uh, conservation group owned this and determined, they could make a, a determination that, um, there would be no dogs on the property or no bicycles or, or some other prohibitions of its, uh, trail use?
I mean, that's, that's possible, though, though certainly the, um, the condition, the deed restrictions that, that we could impose before transferring it to them might relieve some of those concerns. Depending on what the third party is willing to accept.
Rebecca?
Um, I just, one of, one of my concerns as a member of the select board was also that just because you transfer ownership to a third party, that does not ensure that they cannot sell off that property or do other, that doesn't ensure it. I mean, it's, it's, doesn't mean it's always saved. Um, I think that giving up the ownership and the stewardship is a very big step and it also removes the town's people from being involved with specifically how the land is used. And that was part of my reasoning.
Chris?
One quick question for Greg. Uh, if I may, Greg, do you know why the Conservation Commission hasn't weighed in on this?
Yeah, they're actually meeting tonight. I don't know if they're talking about it tonight or not. It's, this, this, you know, this, this came through, was just in the last week and a half or so.
Mary?
I would make a proposal then that we do what we did with Article thirteen and wait till we get the further information and decide at the meeting before, now meeting. That's a motion.
Motion to postpone, uh, decisions to right before town meeting. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Seems to me we have the information we need on this case. We should just vote it tonight. Seems to me, that's my opinion. So, I'm ready to vote tonight.
I think it's, and I, I think it is probably important to hear from Moncom on, on this, um, and to get, um, yeah, their reasoning.
Okay, makes sense. Um, any further discussion? Uh, roll call. Uh, Sue?
I'll follow the, uh, lead of the select board.
So, we're voting about whether we're gonna wait till town meeting or not?
Right, so I'm gonna vote no, as they were already able to decide.
I'm gonna vote no.
No.
I think we should. Mary?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Uh, three-three, the motion fails. So, do we wanna vote on making a recommendation?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to follow the recommendation of the select board. The, say, planning board does not believe the town should forfeit ownership of the land unless recommends voting against this article.
Is there a second?
How about else I could do?
Any discussion?
Can I just say, given the process this transaction would require, it just, I think we're, we're just spending a lot of time and effort trying to do something that, to protect lands that's already protected. I don't see the benefit of it.
And then the other, yeah, the other further discussion is that, back to the, harkening back to the other, uh, question about, you know, of outside chance of a land swap for affordable housing or further burdening the land, basically shutting that door.
I might argue the opposite, actually. It was, if it was owned by some third party, the town would have no more say over it.
Any further discussion on the motion to not approve? Roll call vote. Christina?
Uh, could you just reiterate what we're actually voting on?
So.
To promote.
A yes vote would be.
Yes is voting supporting to not, um, uh, vote in favor of this article.
No.
The, the yes vote is the planning board does not believe the town should forfeit ownership of the land and thus recommends.
No.
Against approving this article.
Against, yeah.
That would be a yes, that, to vote yes is to affirm, is to affirm that statement.
You should vote it no.
Mary?
No.
Yes.
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 Four-two. Yes. Okay, um, just a couple of, uh, housekeeping items.
Sorry, are we gonna talk about Article twelve?
Oh, sorry. Forgot all about your, next item on the agenda, public, uh, planning board report on zoning changes.
No, on the Article twelve on the warrant.
Article twelve on the warrant.
To seek to have, Greg, are, can you give us some, do you have any town council opinion on that one?
So, Article twelve, um, seeks to have voters stipulate that all zoning amendments would have to also be approved at the ballot by the same quantum of vote that would be approved at town meeting. Um, so we have a bylaw that allows, um, voters to, put, uh, items to a ballot, um, town meeting at a ballot. However, in this, in this realm, uh, the town council does not believe that this bylaw would be approved by the AG's office. Uh, there's, um, case law pertaining to towns that have tried to impose, um, the different measures to, to zoning measures and those have been, uh, rejected by the AG's office. But it's, uh, it's, you don't know until you ask, I suppose. But town council will be, uh, giving that opinion at, uh, at the, at the town meeting.
I just have one question for Greg. Um, you said we have a bylaw? I, I just got confused because I thought.
We, we have a special, I'm sorry, we have a special act, actually.
Oh, oh, okay, there's the special act.
It's a, it's a special act that says, um, that voters can approve, approve, approving items by ballot in addition to town meeting.
Chapter two-seventy, right?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Ninety-one, nineteen-ninety-one, yeah, nineteen-ninety-one.
Okay, great.
How did that, do we have any history as to how that came about? That's, that act?
Uh, the minutes aren't very, um, verbose as to the reasoning. Uh, so, just looking over the, the minutes of the meetings, it hasn't shed much light on that. It has been used primarily for bond notes, larger bond notes, anything over a million. It's been amended over the years to increase the amount, but, um, that's, that's been its primary use.
So, it has authorized the town to put items on the warrant? I mean, on the, uh, on.
On the ballot.
On the ballot, but, um.
And like I said, the, the history has been, the focus has been on, um, on money articles and specifically indebtedness, large, large bonds.
And this citizens petition? Um, I assume that the, it was per petition of the select board because, um, of some technical submission or, uh, issues with the petition, petitioners.
We don't think that this one had any issues, um, but there was a challenge to the process that we had been following compared to, as outlined in the bylaw. Um, so just to, just to remove that as a potential debate at the town meeting, the, the board felt that at least the, the spirit of the law was met.
Okay.
And, and so they, they went ahead and put it on. They, they did all, offer with petition because they.
Okay, and, and the select board has, uh, does not recommend approval. Uh, I, I can think of several reasons. Can, can you give me their rationale, give us their rationale, please?
Um, well, primarily because of, uh, town council's feeling that this is, is not a legal, um, legal vote, that it will not withstand scrutiny by the AG's office. And that the, the purpose of town meeting is to, is to have voters debate and be informed by that debate and, and make a decision. And so they feel that the most appropriate place to do that is, is the town meeting.
Um, for those reasons, I'd like to make a motion that the planning board also not recommend approval.
Without being asked to make an opinion.
Well, I'd like to, um, take a vote that we make an opinion that, as the board.
Okay, yes, been motion, you made a motion.
No, seconded.
And then, um, can I just?
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, um, Greg, do we have a written opinion from town council on this that we can review?
Yes, we do.
Could you send that to the board, please? And I'm just curious if, um, I haven't read the special act. I'm not sure where to find that, but, um.
It's at the back of the bylaw, the general bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Um, is town council saying that other towns have done this with this special act and the AG has not approved?
No, they're saying that other, other towns have attempted to, um, have a different process for approving zoning that, that deviates from the statute and that, that has, what has been disapproved.
Okay, so kind of this special act kind of puts it in a different category?
She doesn't believe it does in this particular case.
Okay, um, I mean, just reading, um, what it is, I mean, I, in my opinion, I think we would want more residents to have a voice over zoning bylaws. And I think it's a wonderful thing that aligns with our town's overall governance goals that we would want to ensure more residents are informed and have a voice. And, um, so I actually think it's a wonderful thing and I, I hope the AG approves that.
Any further discussion on the motion to support or not support this?
So, all the voters are invited to attend a ballot, but all. So all the voters are invited to attend a ballot, but all the voters are invited to attend town meeting. And town meeting is where the, um, facts are deliberated and people can make their, um, their voices heard and, and change their minds based on the material presented and the arguments presented. And I think that, um, zoning is complex, we all know that. Um, and to, uh, automatically have zoning go to a, um, ballot, to me, takes away that, um, important deliberative process. Um, furthermore, if the town council has told us that it is not legal, we've worked very hard to remove things that are illegal from our bylaws, so why would we knowingly, uh, and we've, this board over and over has asked for town council's opinions and argued that we should follow them. So I think, um, for those two reasons, we should absolutely vote, recommend not approving this.
I just wanna add a couple of things. I think there are many, many problems with this. Um, Sarah has identified most of them. I just wanna point out that I don't think the special act even allows a zoning issue to be considered because the special act specifically mentions a general bylaw. If they wanted to include zoning bylaw, they would have specified it and they did not. And, um, again, many things, but another one that I think is incredibly important from the language of the special act is that, um, the, it states that "A ballot question shall appear on the ballot in the following form. Do you approve of the measure summarized below? A fair concise summary of the measure as determined by town council shall follow." So town council has to draft the language of what you're proposing on the ballot. And town council already says that they don't approve of this particular, um, article and they don't think the attorney general will approve it. So I think that should be the end of the discussion.
Christina?
Thanks, Ron. So I guess I just wanna backtrack to what Sarah just mentioned. That's what I understood this to be was town meeting would happen as normal and then whatever was decided at town meeting would then go to the ballot. So for me, I feel that this does encourage more participation. You can watch town meeting, everything is recorded, those people that are physically unable to make it to town meeting that are snowbirds, college students, I feel like this would then give others the opportunity to participate um, and see and watch and listen to the arguments that were made at town meeting and then let their voices be heard at the ballot. So I didn't see it was skipping town meeting. I thought it was in addition to town meeting.
Well, you're requiring people, it works the other way, too. You're requiring people to go out and vote twice. They vote once at town meeting and then maybe they can't make it to, uh, the ballot. So I don't know.
The ballot is available via mail. You can do it early. I mean, there's a lot of options that you don't need to, um, there's really no reason not to vote.
Chris?
So I'm gonna call this out. I think the, the intent, I'm not impugning anybody who drafted it, but it's clear that the result of this would make it harder to pass a zoning bylaw, not easier. And the reason I say that is because it only goes to ballot if it's approved by town meeting. It doesn't go to ballot if it's not approved, so you, you get a double bite at the apple, so to speak, to, to turn it down. You go to town meeting, you want to turn it down, and if it does pass, you get to turn it down again at the ballot box. Whereas the opposite is not true. So it's clearly making, it's an impediment to, um, citizen participation essentially. So, uh, you know, I just, I think this is a very cynical approach to, to, and you know, it assumes furthermore, if you take the premise that is to make it more difficult, then the premises that are zoning ordinance the way it is now is perfect and doesn't require much change at all. We know that's not the case. So we should be encouraging participation both before and during town meeting and not make a, a double bite at the apple to, to turn it down at the last minute.
So, um, hmm, I, you know, I guess just coming at the same issue with different angles. I think, um, the more people that are exposed to being able to vote on something is, um, greater citizen participation as opposed to an impediment to it. I, what would get passed to town ballot is any zoning amendment adopted by the town meeting. So whatever was flushed out at town meeting then goes to the ballot. And I do agree with your point, Christine, that, um, and I've talked to a lot of, um, residents that it's hard to get to town meeting, whether because of the time commitment or they're elderly or, you know, you can, you can list out all sorts of things. So I don't know why we wouldn't want more participation, um, and I, you know, hard pressed to, to understand why anybody would vote against this, um, but there you have it. So I, I would definitely vote in favor of that.
Just one more practical concern, and that is the expense that this would, um, encumber the town with. I mean, look at all of the zoning, um, issues we brought before town meeting within the last twelve months. Can you imagine that every time one of those passed? Each issue, each zoning bylaw, each one would have to go then, um, to go to town council. They would have to draft something for a ballot, then the town would have to hold an election. That's expensive to hold an election. It's the ballots, it's staffing the election, tallying the votes. Um, the planning board would probably have to hold additional hearings before the, um, election took place. And it just, it's adding expense and time and, um, it's.
And, and one final thing, Ron, think how big the ballot would be. The ballot would be a fifty-page thing if, if you were trying to capture a zoning bylaw.
Yes, would also dilute the value of town meeting. Um, Rebecca?
From the select board, per se effective member. Um, our form of government is town meeting. That is our form of government here. Everybody gets to come and have their say. It is about as democratic as you can get. That's our form of government. If, if people in town don't want that anymore, then maybe it's time to modify that. But again, it's our form of government. And I don't know how you can get more democratic than that process there.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I already did move down. I already moved to, uh.
Moved in second.
Moved in second.
No, this was discussion. Uh, any further discussion?
Well, what was the motion? I'm just, I'm confused.
The motion was to not recommend Article 12.
Was that on our agenda? I missed it.
Town meeting warrant's on our agenda.
And zoning, and, uh, Ron had sent us that, uh, email saying we should be prepared to discuss everything on the. I don't see it, but.
So on the motion, um, any further discussion?
I'm just concerned it's not on the agenda, but we can deal with that later.
Yes, it is.
Your zoning third bullet point.
Well, you could put it on the agenda and you can get up before town meeting, uh, with our meeting.
What it is on.
And, um, if people feel that there's an issue with that, otherwise, um.
With, uh, Sue's saying.
It's on. It says, "Any zoning amendment adopted by the town meeting shall not go into effect without submission to a ballot vote per citizen petition." You had it on here for discussion.
Okay. On the motion, I'll take a, uh, roll call vote. Mary?
Uh, no.
Sarah?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Christina?
No.
The chair votes yes. Okay, um, anything else before we move into Sarah's report on zoning changes? This, I think, is this what you're talking about?
Yeah, um, so the, uh, anything else? Can I go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I, I passed out a, just a quick, um, version of that. We have to, um, make a report to the town moderator concerning our, um, proposed zoning change, so I drafted this. I believe that, um, Gail actually had the article, the legal notice, and it was actually, should be September twenty-ninth and October sixth. I'll make that change. Um, just says, uh, so I guess since Christina can't see the piece of paper, I'll read it. Planning board is proposing one to the town moderator. Um, proposing one article for special town meeting on November thirteenth. The proposed article is to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws, amending the language and table of uses. Item E seven and note thirteen, removing the limitation that existing outbuildings can only be occupied by an employer of the parcel, of the parcel owner or take any action relative thereto. The board voted five to two to recommend the article. The change removes the language that may be discriminatory and maintains the special permit oversight of the accessory use. And then it, uh, indicates when we held a public hearing and that the, um, that the hearing is properly noticed. So I'll take, I will, um, move to, uh, accept the report and submit it to the town moderator.
I'll second it with the changes to the dates.
Change of the dates.
Any further discussion?
The dates were correct.
What dates are changing?
I'm looking at the.
She's, she's, uh, changing the dates on the, uh, when it was noticed in the cricket.
The note, the cricket notice has here, um, we can double check, I can double check them with Gail once I, like, I'll send this to.
Yeah, it's de minimis. Whatever the dates were, whatever the dates are.
It's de minimis, whatever the dates are.
In the cricket, it's, uh.
Um, Gail, I have the cricket article here in front of me, so. Anyway, then maybe that was that, maybe that was wrong. So we'll check, we'll check the dates. Um, uh.
So motion made you, um, accept the report with the dates, uh, with the correct dates put in, when, um.
When, yeah.
And there was a second on that. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Sue?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Mary?
No.
I didn't agree with it, with the article.
But the report is accurate, isn't it? The point is the report is accurate.
I have had some emails going around. I'm, I don't fully maintain that what we presented in the public hearing saying that the language was discriminatory to a family member is correct. So I don't fully agree with that.
Based on our town council input, that was what we received, so.
Yeah, town council said, um, actually didn't say it was discriminatory, so that's the issue. We only presented one side at the public hearing and I think that was incorrect, so.
Okay.
Your vote is no. Christina?
No.
The chair votes yes.
Okay.
Article for special town meeting, four point two.
Yeah, the only other, um, can I just also, one other thing on the zoning?
Zoning?
Um, Greg had the very, I think, great suggestion of, um, uh, putting the, um, motion for town meeting, um, in a way that I think was very easy to understand, which is to, I can actually just show it, to excerpt the relevant, um, section of the table and strike out the language and show what is being inserted um, both here and in the note. I can pass this around. I don't think there's a vote needed, but, um, it's exactly the language that we, um.
Just formatting.
But it's just a formatting and I think it's, uh, helps the, um, uh, town meeting, the meeting to, um, understand. It, it did not print in red, the new language not printed red. So Greg, that's the only question I had is if you're gonna duplicate it in black and white, it might wanna be italic rather than in a color. Unless you're gonna print color copies.
Yeah, we'll probably do, we'll probably do color, but anyways, we'll.
Yeah, either way, so it needs, so it's clear. And then the note is also shown here, so. Um, so that, I thought that was excellent, um.
What is the short term?
Yes, the short term is in the note.
In the note.
In the note, yeah. Because, um, I was concerned that it, that our language that we approved didn't, was potentially confusing that we were still requiring a special, uh, special permit by the ZBA. We had, we were silent on that in the, in our language. So this makes it clear that it's, um, continues to have a special permit by the ZBA.
I know Alan's a stickler on this. Is there any chance we may be able to put this on screen at meeting?
I think it'll be a handout.
Oh, a handout, okay.
Yeah. That will be a motion, okay.
Yeah, I, it's a suggestion, 'cause I, you know, following along that and, um, um, looking at what other towns do, especially for zoning articles, is within the motion. Well, within the article that's presented at, the packet that's presented for, um, town meeting is a lot of the backup detail that occurred to get them to there. It would be town council's opinion in there. It would be, um, describing the certain revisions that, that got the, the planning board or whomever to that point. So the actual, like, ADU article may be four pages long, but it actually gives residents information. So I'm not saying we do it for this town meeting, but I think that, um, we could follow some towns that do it quite well.
An article in the cricket, some background, so. Okay, um, that's that, and, um, I think that's all I have on the agenda. Uh, except, um, just to confirm that we voted to meet ahead of special town meeting at five-thirty on the thirteenth at a place that Gail will inform us when she gets a room.
Five-thirty?
How about five-thirty? That would be enough. When is town meeting start? Seven or six-thirty?
Six, six-thirty.
So five-thirty will give us enough time to do that and then see if there are any donuts.
Ron, sorry.
Christina, sorry.
So do we need to speak as a board on any of these besides the, um, the zoning one? And I'm assuming Laura's gonna speak to that?
I thought I would ask Laura, um, and then with, uh, Sarah as a backup.
So we don't need to speak on anything else, is that true?
I would assume that we would be asked to give our opinion on these, um, these, uh, lease, these articles we just discussed tonight, right?
I don't know. I think it's just published. Do, Greg, are we expected to speak on our, uh, on the articles?
Well, you can do it one of two ways. You can either have the moderator report out your recommendation or you can, you can speak to it directly.
I would suggest that we, um, have asked the chair to appoint people, as he's done in the past, to speak as appropriate on various, on these. I think that's important where the land is at. This is, this is actually a responsibility of ours to weigh in on land, um, transfers of land.
So maybe we have speak on the two land ones and not the, um, community center or all of them you're suggesting?
We were asked to weigh in on the community center lease, all four of those, right?
Okay.
What'd you think about it, Ron?
Yeah, I wanna think about it. But in the past, you've just designated people.
All right, but I, I guess you're, you're gonna have to be out.
I'm gonna have to be out?
Well, you voted against things.
I can always speak.
For them?
No, 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 I can always speak. I can always just speak.
Well, you can speak as a, as a citizen. You shouldn't take the stage and speak on behalf of the planning board.
No, I don't speak on behalf of the planning board.
I know, but you move up to, onto the stage. Um, and I think it's more appropriate for you to speak as any other citizen on the floor. No.
So I, I don't know where we're sitting, but if, so I, I would speak as a minority view on the planning board. I would, I would disagree with that.
That's our, our rules and regulations that we approved.
You can't do that.
Well, it's in the community handbook that once we, uh, you know, everybody jumps on whatever the board's decision is.
Right.
That's sort of the rules, but.
Maybe you can only speak as a person, as a private citizen.
As a citizen, just like everyone else on the floor.
It's a private citizen that's on the planning board.
Not at the dais, but not on the dais, not at the dais.
That's fine. I mean, I.
Okay.
It's fascinating, all the rules that give me, but yes, I'm good.
Um, just before we break, um, November twenty-seventh meeting, which is.
So Thanksgiving.
Right, Thanksgiving.
The week after.
November, oh my god.
Week after, week after.
Week after, week after.
Yeah, so we'll all be fat and happy and I'm thinking rules and regulations possibly and hopefully we will have a self signaling permit to start on. And did you have something else in mind?
I had a question. So I had sent an email and I didn't hear back, what is, who are we sending the curb cut errors or driveway entrances to, who's compiling them, is that what we're discussing on the
Gail, we
We agreed that Gail would do it.
Gail would start sending them to Gail, Gail will compile and then she will get it out to us, she's got a month and a half.
Yeah, so we, in fairness to her, we should get them to her in the next two weeks, before town meeting, how about, try to get the
Well, it's not, not necessary.
Well, but then she needs some time to compile them and she only works a day or two a week, so.
She's got the November 20th, okay.
Yeah, so it's two weeks.
That's true, okay.
So, so, I mean, just so what if two people send contradictory, you know, so how are they being compiled?
Yeah, we're going to get them, we'll, we'll get them and, and discuss them.
Okay, all right, she's just compiling the comments, I got you.
Yeah, she just compile and then we'll look at them.
Okay.
I think we can also, if they're typos, she can do them with track changes.
Yeah, the diminutism stuff, let's not wordsmith things to death, I mean, we'll just correct them and then, I don't know if we want to get Nate in here during that meeting or maybe a subsequent one.
I was going to say.
It's not a good one, I would think.
Is Greg still on?
So has DPW halted approvals until we actually have regulations?
No, I don't think so, because we approved them as they were, June 12th, we approved them. Now the question is, are we, do we want to amend them?
Well, again, and I think I said this at last meeting, the five to two vote approved them, I don't know that they were actually ever vetted, but but approved to move to count council, town council for review and then passed over to the
The motion was not to move them to town council for review, the motion was to approve them. And I, maybe they should have gone to town council, but I think, you know, we can't have delayed every driveway curb cut application for four months because, you know, and so they, the motion, my point is, the motion was to approve them.
Yeah.
That's what the minutes say, that, I, I can't remember what we said or didn't say or talked about, I didn't, I, I looked at the minutes and they say there was a motion to approve the tract changes version with the changes in the tract changes version.
Yeah, right, the motion.
Was it perfect process? Probably not, but that is, so I don't think that we, that the, so I asked Nate, as I reported last time, he's approved however many he said
Four.
Uh, four, and I'm sorry, I didn't forward everybody the email, but I will. Of where the, and the addresses, so I think if we want to, it's my opinion, that if we want to make changes to it, we should send the changes to Gail and we should decide, maybe Gail and Ron can look at the proposed changes and decide if there's a public hearing warranted and post a hearing.
So I, I guess, I'm sorry, I missed that connection that they had been using our rules and regulations and our forms in there.
Yes.
So if I, okay. I kind of don't understand how with some of those errors in there because they contradict, but
I think they're using
I mean, I can, I can go in and ask for a couple of the approvals and see how they were filed and
Is Greg still on? Greg, any, do I need to get with you on these consultants, possibly lining up consultants for self signal? Is that a process?
How would like, how would the board like to proceed with that, do you want?
I think you were going to make recommendations to us.
Okay.
We, we, I think Betsy sent some names and then Sarah Mallis said, and then to Christina's point, not trying to use the same ones for SLV, I sent you the names of the ones they have already used.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you and Nate were going to get some proposals and just recommend the, the one that, on each topic that you recommended.
Okay, we will, we'll, we'll complete that, we'll get that to you.
And you know, as, as you are a pro temp planner, we heard anything about when their application, you haven't heard anything on when the formal special permit application will be filed with them?
Siteset.
Self signal.
Yeah, my sense is they're going to wait until the ZBA process is, is completed.
So probably be in December, I would think, at that point.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Subtle.
And seconded, any objections? Thank you all.